It's nine o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting or order this morning. Oh, I have the devotion this morning. I have a young lady with us that's from our home church, Cadence Springs Methodist, who assists our pastor a lot, and it's Ms. Alex Cumbers Watt. Come on up, Alex.
It's nice to be here this morning. Like you said, my name is Alex Watt. I serve as the lay minister for Cadence Springs Methodist Church of Union Way. I hate to do this, but I'm gonna read off of my phone. I have three toddlers, and I've learned if I print something, it either ends up in a coloring book or it's lost. So it's the safest bet this morning. So I'm gonna read from Second Kings. It's chapter four, verses one through seven. I read from the NIV, so if you like King James, you might feel a little disappointed. So the wife of a man from the company of the prophets cried out to Elisha, "Your servant, my husband, is dead. You know that you revere the Lord, but now his creditor is coming to take my boys as slaves." Elisha replied, "How can I help you? Tell me what you have in the home." "Your servant has nothing there at all," she says, "except a small jar of olive oil." Elisha says, "Go around and ask all of your neighbors for empty jars. Do not ask for just a few. And then go inside and shut the door behind you and your sons. Pour oil unto all of the jars, and as each is filled, put it to the side." She left him and shut the door behind her, her sons. They brought jars to her, and she kept pouring. And when all of the jars were full, she said to her son, "Bring me another one." And he replies, "There was no jar left. The oil has stopped flowing." She went and told the man of God, and he says, "Go and sell the oil and pay the debt. To you and your sons can live on what is left." And just for a little bit of context for this time period, because I really feel like you have to understand what's going on to realize God's miracles, is in ancient Israel, if you had a debt, you could pay it off. If you don't have enough money, you would work it. If you died, your sons bear that responsibility. If your sons died, your daughters would bear the responsibility, and then your wives. And so this woman, who has lost her husband, is also very dependent on her sons. They would be the ones who would now bear responsibility for her upkeep, for her food, for her shelter. And so she's gonna lose everything if her donors come and take her sons. And so a question that I have for you this morning is, do you believe that God can do anything? We so often will tell others that God can do impossible things, and that God will take care of it all, because He is a God that has no bounds and no limits. But do you believe it? Do you expect God to work in miraculous ways in your own life? Because you see, sometimes God wants to bless us, but there are times when He will require us to do work. James 2:24 tells us, "You see that a person is considered righteous by what they do and not by faith alone." When the prophet Elisha tells the woman to gather jars, I wonder if she silently thought, "Why am I hurting my gathering jars when I just told you I only have a little? And do you want me to waste what I do have? I don't have time for this." I remember three years ago, when the doctors told me that my son would die in a Mickey. I took their word. I prayed that he would be healed, but I didn't really believe that he would. The doctors had told me. I had seen empties. I had seen his grave for brain bleed. I had seen brain damage. And the top neonatal doctors in Oheu said that my son would die. Imagine my shock when his grave for brain bleed and his white matter spots were miraculously gone three months later. You see, God isn't always conventional in our way of human thinking or acting. He is transcendent, which means He is above everything that we can know or understand. Sometimes He does miracles on His own, like a son, and sometimes He will ask you to gather jars. Maybe that looks like keep inviting your friend to church to his neighbor come, or to keep tidying when you don't have a spare penny, or if you're like me, starting seminary school with absolutely no clear path of what you can do after. But you can trust that the Lord is good, and He does provide. If we will gather jars, He will make sure there is enough oil that they are filling. The part that I love about this story is that the number of jars is entirely dependent on her obedience. She could have gathered one, in her doubt feeling silly, and her blessing would have only been one jar. She could have gathered a thousand, and the oil would have flowed until they were filled, because God's faithful. We so often forget that God requires us to participate in this relationship with Him, and if we want to truly benefit from His goodness, His mercy, His love, and forgiveness, you must gather jars as if your life depends on it, because it will. We must listen and obey, even in doubts and hurt, and even when we think we have it in our own control, because God will keep pouring, but it is up to us how much you want to accept it. And today, you can accept it where you receive it. No big ceremony or baptisms needed. God's love meets the woman right where she is, in her brokenness, without a husband and on the verge of losing her voice, with nothing to offer God in exchange for help. And He will meet you where you are. In whatever broken, tattered state that you're in, all you have to do is accept Him to happen. And if you don't know the Lord, you can find me and we can talk. You can find me at Cadence Springs, Sundays at ten fifty, and Wednesdays at five thirty. And if you do know Him, let this be a reminder to you today, to not only four-year-olds, but to tell people what God has done for your life. And so go pray with me really quickly. Heavenly Father, we thank you this morning for all that you are. You continuously pour blessings out on us, and we can never give you enough praise for all that you have done, and we will do in our lives and in our communities. You are a good, kind, and loving Father. We ask that you would be with the people in this room this morning, to meet them where they are. Lift up every heart in this room, all the burdens, the sorrows, and the pains that need healing, Lord. We ask you to comfort, heal, and protect in a way that the Lord by your name. Forgive us, Lord, where we fail you. Help us to stay on the narrow path that points to the way, the truth, and the light. We thank you for your son, Jesus, that died, and for our sins that we might be made new in your presence. We love you, Lord, and we ask all these thanks to you to stay. Amen.
Thank you, Alex. If y'all would stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. That brings us down to amendments to the agenda. I actually have two I'd like to put under supervisor items at the end. One is a discussion on the sheriff's office, and the other, I'd like to pull, on the consent agenda, I'd like to pull item A under the board of supervisors and talk about it too for just a moment. Put it under my supervisor items. Mr. Morris?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
Mr. Ross?
None.
Mr. Bossard?
None.
Mr. Eldridge?
Yes, I have one, if you could put me under consent, authorizing for the clerk to advertise for bids for our county depositories.
Okay. Mr. Fulkin?
No, sir.
Mr. O'Neil?
None.
Mr. Comer?
I have one executive session that deals with a property acquisition matter. It should be very brief.
Okay. Are there any others? Any other amendments to the agenda? Okay. Not accept a motion to approve the amendments to the agenda?
I move.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bossard, the second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. That brings us down to general public comments. Anyone here for general public comments this morning?
We come in peace.
Good morning. T and I just wanted to give an update based on a Jackson County Long-Term Recovery Committee meeting we had on Friday morning. About a third of the meeting was about the tornado recovery from the two tornadoes that hit a week ago, Sunday, one in OJ, one in Pascagoula. I'm sure that you've heard from Earl Etheridge and Ryan Heath from the EMA Department, and everything they did was great. We, from the committee side, have really just had one case to work with, a single mom, and we are working through that, and one woman who needed tree debris removal. There was quite a bit of discussion about how blessed we were that this was not worse than it was, and that the timing that Sunday morning was such, even with Aztecas not having diners quite yet. But the home, actual home damage was very minimal.
And another thing that we talked about, and you guys know, with food insecurities being a huge issue with SNAP and WIC and all of those people that have been affected by that, we as a committee decided not to have, say, such a food distribution, if you will, because so many people are distributing food right now. And in United Way, you guys, you know, we're on the front lines of this issue, and our primary target area is seniors that can't go to a distribution site, and also the homeless, because a lot of them receive SNAP and benefits. And so, but that's one of the things that we talked about, too, as a committee, do we want to have, say, a distribution site and do that, and possibly at the fairgrounds? And we decided that since a lot of other churches are doing this, we didn't want to duplicate those services.
I think additionally, what we're looking at as the government shutdown continues is not just where the government workers are. Ingalls, for example, has 300 families who are government workers, not Ingalls workers, who work directly with them, who have been working without pay. Now this would be, what, the 33rd, 34th day of that. So we're looking at that group and what its needs are, but then we're also looking at the discontinuation of SNAP and WIC. Now, we saw Friday that two federal judges have said that the government must report by noon today what their plan is to go into emergency funding. Now, as long as they do that, we shouldn't have a problem. If they don't, then we're going to have a bigger issue with SNAP and WIC. One of the things that we chose to do is to beef up the food pantry at, staff up, rather, the food pantry at Head Start, where the Community Action of South Mississippi has a pantry. So remember, food banks are the organizations that receive the food, that then stock the pantries. So we want to make sure that everybody understands that. And the USDA is who helps stock these banks. And the USDA isn't doing it now, and this is about, what, 35 days? It's five weeks. So five weeks without USDA stocking of banks means that banks aren't stocking pantries. And so we are looking at extending the hours at Community Action of South Mississippi, and then we're also looking at the messaging, which is to give money to the banks for the purchasing. It is much better to give money than to give food, because a lot of times, people clear out their pantries, their own pantries. Food is almost expired or expired. It's food nobody wanted to begin with, and we're a very diabetic community, especially the lower-income people are more diabetic and high blood pressure, so they don't need things with a lot of salt and a lot of sugar. They need proteins. It is the banks who know that. So that is some of the messaging that we're working on getting out there. Are there any questions? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all for what you do, for sure.
Anyone else for general public comments? Oh, come on.
Good morning.
Give us your name and address. I forgot to tell them.
Sure. Christian Hartley, Cadence Bank, 3210 Market Street, here in Pascagoula, Mississippi. Thank you all. I also come in peace with good news. We are excited that our grand opening is this upcoming Thursday at our new Cadence Bank location right here on Market Street. And this is just your cordial invitation to come out. We enjoy working with the county, and we wanted to invite, be sure that all of you all got your invitation. You should have gotten it via email, but if you didn't, it was just a reminder for you all to cordially come out and visit with us this upcoming Thursday, November 6, from 4 to 6 p.m. And I'm open to any questions, and I look forward to getting the depository bid as well. Any questions for me? Thank you all for all you do for the county.
Thank you for what you do.
You have a good day. Anyone else? All right. That brings us down to consent agenda. Accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. I have a motion by Mr. Taylor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. All right. That brings us down to department heads. Ms. Wells?
Good morning. The first item I have is the order of approving the claim stocket.
Well, she told through. I have a motion for Mr. Morris, I'll second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
Okay. Second item I have is the resolution authorizing the interfund loans for fiscal year September 30 of 2026.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Mr. Taylor, a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
Okay. Last item I have is the resolution authorizing the operating transfers for fiscal year September 30 of 2026.
I have a motion by Mr. Bossard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Come on up, Joe. That brings us down to you. Y'all, excuse me.
Good morning. The first item I have for you today, let me get my glasses on.
I understand.
Is a resolution accepting a petition for acceptance of an extension of Bryce Road in District One. This is up off of John Smith Road up there, Berry's area.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, and you can put me on the list and look at it.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
I got Randy. I need one more.
You put me on there.
Okay.
All right. The next one I have is a resolution to board supervisors of Jackson County, Mississippi, accepting a petition for acceptance of an extension of West Neck Road in District One, which is up off Indian Lane in North Van Cleve, go down past Campground. We took that road several years back, and another extension of it.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll say, and put me on the list.
Troy, you good?
And Troy. Okay, thank y'all. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
The only thing I want to tell you, the state is gonna be inspecting the bridge at nine o'clock on Tanner Williams.
This morning?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, good. That's good news. Tell them, hand deliver that letter. Marcus, planning, come on.
Marcus is out for surgery, so I'm Amanda, and I've got before you the planning commission recommendations for the month of October.
I have a motion by Mr. Bossard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank y'all.
That's serious, huh?
Nothing.
Okay, good.
Nope.
For Marcus, yeah.
Oh, no.
Thank y'all. That brings us down to action items.
I really don't have any updates today. I'm gonna be working with Manning to get him down here before the legislative session in January, so I look forward to bringing him down and kind of discussing all of our items that we'll be looking for.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. That brings us down to supervisor items, and I had two. I just want to discuss real quick. First one was on the sheriff's office. I know we've talked about in the past the possibility to maybe find another place for the sheriff's office, and I know recently there's been discussion on using the old EOC. And I hate to see us just quit on that. I'd like to see us at least work on a preliminary plan, you know, see just what they need, and don't have to do, you know, anything full-blown. But I'd like to see us just keep working on it, do some kind of preliminary plan, and maybe figure out where we could put it one day, you know, if we want to move it out from where it's at. I didn't know what the board would feel about that, but.
Well, I've been kind of doing some preliminary, looking at that, too, and I think I had said something to Brian a while back about, and I know I talked to Earl about it, possibly seeing if we could acquire that property next door to the new EOC building in Sunplex, and then we could combine both parking lots. So basically, the EOC, the new EOC building is to the north side of the property. The south side of the property is parking lot. So my idea was, was to take, move the sheriff's office building to the south side of that lot next door, and then have one big combined controlled access parking lot for EOC and the sheriff's office. And then, because I think the sheriff said about a 20, 20,000 square foot building would work for him. And I gotta tell y'all, that, the dispatch center over there is horrible.
Yeah.
They need something, I mean, you're asking folks to work in an area that, they're there for eight to 12-hour shift, that looks like a dungeon. And how can they serve the public on emergency calls when they're not even in a spot that's, you know, it's just not, it's just not a nice location for them. So I really believe that the sheriff's office deserves, I mean, it's time. I mean, the sheriff's office has been working out of that old courthouse since it was built.
That's right.
You know, so, and I see other counties throughout the state investing in new sheriff's office buildings, and so, I mean, I don't understand why we can't. So I totally agree with you, Mr. Cumbers. We need to, we need to look at that, and I think putting them in the center part of the county, out of a flood zone, along with our new emergency operations center, would be the best service for the whole county, and the citizens would get more bang for their buck if they were all located together.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with, and I'd like to.
But I'm like you, I would like to start looking into that.
Yeah. And like I say, we don't have to just, you know, have a full-blown set of plans drawn up, but kind of get an idea and be working on something conceptual. I know it's gonna take time to come up with the money, you know. It's gonna be a lot of money.
I believe I've seen some counties applying for restoration funds related to, I don't know how those score work. That's something to keep an eye on. Yeah, I've not seen them award a project, kind of restore for that. And I know at one time, the sheriff was trying to seek some state or federal funds to try to help offset the cost of something like that. And we can, I can get the sheriff on that, see if he'll read that with it. There, you know, the Sunplex is really a light industrial park. We kind of, we kind of are the exception to the rule with the EOC, and we, you know, they have ordinances and standards as to what you can build out there, and we kind of got by that with it being office space. And, you know, the other thing is, you know, there's only a handful of those lots that are left out there. So not to say we couldn't build it out there, but we just need to look and see if that's, that's where it needs to be. But I'll reach out to the sheriff and see where he's at.
Okay.
If we can go ahead and look at just hiring somebody to start the design work, they can start working on the design work, and then six months, nine months, whatever, come to us with a.
Kind of got to know, you know, where you're gonna be, though.
Yeah.
Before you start doing a lot of design, because, you know, the site and the size of it and the shape of it and all that kind of plays a part in what the, what the building will look like, so.
Maybe get someone to track that down for us, you know?
Yeah. I think probably some programming would be helpful to understand, you know, what the needs are first, and then, and then you kind of know what square footage you're looking at.
Yeah.
And then maybe you can go, go from there and find the, find a piece of land. I think he's brought up some type of training facility there at the sheriff's department. I don't know that you could fit that at the EOC property.
See, you're talking about training facility, like going into buildings, like actually, or just a shooting range?
I'm not sure. I know they have one shooting range.
Yeah. So I mean, to me, that sounds like maybe entering a building with the SWAT team or something like that.
They do that out there at the training, at the gun range out there. They've got a scenario set up out there, so I think they're okay there. I think it's just an administrative office along with dispatching. And the reason why I'm thinking the EOC building, because you got EOC that already has, that'll have, you know, communications in there. You have the sheriff's office next door with communication, so they all kind of work together, and they're right next door to each other. So that's, that was my thinking about the, about the Sunplex property. It's a one acre, a one and a half acre lot next door to them that I don't think those people are ever gonna build them. So it could be, it possibly could be purchased.
Everybody good, just keeping, looking into it a little further?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. We don't need a motion for that, do we, Jimmy?
No, sir. I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank y'all. And the next one I have is under board of supervisor items, item A, was our holiday schedule. And I know we're taking off Christmas Day, which is Thursday. I was gonna see how the board felt about taking off half a day on Wednesday, if we can do that.
Can we do that, Jimmy? I don't know how, exactly how that works, you know, for, for as long as I've been here, you know, the governor grants us certain days that we can take off for holidays, and that's what the state observed. And, you know, us being a subdivision of the state, we've always kind of gone by that.
Right.
I've heard that some cities have talked about maybe taking off Christmas Eve, or, and they may have more flexibility in changing that. I've never looked at that. If we, I'd be glad to look at it, Mr. Cumbers, and.
If you don't mind, take a look at it and see if we can.
Report back to y'all whether we can legally, legally do that.
I wondered about that myself. I didn't know. I knew we always follow.
Sure, the employees would certainly appreciate, you know, the extra time off. I don't, I think this will be the first year that we haven't had Christmas Eve off since I've been around.
I know most of them are gonna take off.
I know, like, I know, like, there's some departments, the department head, like the state-level departments, that are able to, like the Department of the military, the tag can take a day and say it's an administrative day and give them off when he decides it's necessary. So I don't know if we just, but I know that there are agencies that can do it.
If you don't mind looking into it, Mr. Comer, it'd be good.
I'd be glad to.
All right. Sounds good.
Do we need to approve the days that the governor has given us, or was that approved under consent?
No, I pulled it, so let's, let's go ahead and do that.
If we go ahead and approve that, and if legally we can do that, then the board can decide next meeting whether or not they want to add a half day for Christmas Eve.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever you, whatever you may want to do.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We approve item A under the board of supervisors. I have a second one, Mr. Ross. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank y'all. Mr. Morris, I believe you have an item?
Yes, I have a resolution to appoint Mr. James E. Fountain to the Jackson County Civil Service Commission. I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Mr. Taylor, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Very good. Mr. Taylor, you didn't have anything, did you?
I have none.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Mr. Bossard, I believe you have one.
Yep. So we got word a couple of weeks ago that Bass Pro Shop, they're on, locating on Mallard Road, the new, new connector road, they're close to breaking ground, hopefully December, January, somewhere around in there. They've already got all their wetlands permits, everything's taken care of. So in mine and Brian's discussions with the developer, his timeline right now is about December, January to get started. So that being said, early on, when we were talking to him years ago, getting him here, one of the things we discussed with him was, you know, the tree line that runs along the interstate between the county's property and the state's property right there, you know, he had asked if, you know, we could get that cleared eventually. And of course, I told him, "Yeah, when you start construction, we'll do that," you know. So we'll look at doing that anyway, just to kind of tell him, "Hey, look, we're, we're willing to work with you, but, you know, we're not gonna get ahead of this thing until you start construction." So I feel comfortable that he's fixing to start construction, so what I'm asking the board to do, we've talked to Joe. the board to do, we've talked to Joe, there's a county access road that runs down beside the property to the interstate, and we've already talked to the highway department, and we can get a permit from the highway department to clear all that, and what that'll do is, that'll open up that tree line that, that basically, you know, it makes their property not visible, and what they're wanting is, they're wanting to be visible from the interstate.
Sure. Is there much, is there much timber on it?
No.
It is about, it is about two acres of clear.
Yeah, okay.
Two acres. If y'all do that, I need permission from the board to sign the M.D.O. permit, and I'm also going to need permission from the board to sign a permit across the Delta Gas Line. We matted them last week, and I need permission, y'all, I'm going to sign that permit also across that gas line.
Okay. Well, you're going to have to mat it to cross, yeah?
But there's already some improvements to that, that little road that's going to be made anyway, so Joe can make those improvements to get out there, and then they'll just go along with the more permanent thing that we'll have there. It used to be a county road that connected, before the interstate was built, that connected St. Martin and Lattimore, and then when the interstate was built, they did away with that road, so...
Old Gorn Flow Road.
Yeah, Old Gorn Flow Road, yep, so, but that was a connector road before the interstate was built, so, but my motion is to allow the road department to go ahead and seek the necessary permits and give them permission to go ahead and clear that frontage area for the new Bass Pro Shop.
Okay, will that cover what you need, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Bossard, I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And one other thing, I have talked to Commissioner Busby about eventually going all the way down to Exit 50 and clearing that whole tree line there, so that all the other proposed projects that are on the drawing board will be, have clear frontage from the interstate, clear vision from the interstate to promote their developments.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to add on just a little bit to that, too. I did speak with the district engineer last week, and he told us that he would be forthcoming and help us with the permit, so that we should be able to expedite that, but he also said that over the next year or so, they plan to overlay the interstate between the Harrison County line and Exit 50, and at that time, that they could clear the rest of the trees that we don't get as part of this permit, but I'd like to, if y'all have a problem, go ahead and put that, get them, put that in writing, you know, send them an email and just, just confirm that, so we have it on file.
I think we need to go ahead and do it, yeah.
Yeah, and then secondly, I spoke with the developers out there, too, and Joe and I had talked about them needing to get access through the property, and so, you know, they're, they're willing to go ahead and sign a right of entry or an easement, whatever it is that we need to allow Joe and them to cross that property, too. I think y'all want to work it, try to work it from the property side versus the highway side, so they're willing to do that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian, and Joe. Thank y'all.
Yep, that brings us down to closed session. I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Yeah, Mr. Cumbers, I had the five matters for our potential executive session. None of them are real long. One's a pending litigation, the Pat Harrison Waterway District versus Jackson County case that's been pending since 2017 or '18. Potential litigation regarding a public records request, pending litigation regarding the annexation litigation, got a personnel matter to discuss, potential litigation regarding municipal prisoners, and then a, what was added was a property acquisition matter to discuss with you.
Accept a motion to go into closed session for those items?
I move.
Have a motion by Mr. Bossard.
Second.
A second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank, I love you for being here today.